Ladies and gentlemen, we call this meeting the order today for our July the 23rd, 2025 Board Meeting. Welcome everybody here and anybody that's in the virtual world also. Our first item on the agenda is to convene into a closed meeting.
I want that motion. Yes, sir. Need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.237-11A1 for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, county attorney, and sheriff, because they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.237-12F.
All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make it.
All right, have a second. All right, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of us against? Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in closed meeting and we'll let you know as soon as we come out of closed meeting. We're going to close the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certified by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right, can I have a motion?
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Haney, aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are now back into open meeting. We have the EDC here, so we need to let them open their meeting. Come to order, please.
Yes, yes. The EDC meeting. You ready for me?
We don't have a call.
We don't?
No, you do not have a call.
Okay.
Dr. Pike is out of town. We have not heard back from Mr. Call.
All right, what's the answer, gentlemen? No call?
I would say just go ahead and have a discussion.
Just have a discussion?
I would move forward with the discussion.
That's right, they can't legally open a meeting.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right, good enough.
Right.
All right, let's move on to the county administrator items. Tadlock will let you take that over.
No, I would go ahead and have a discussion on the property.
All right.
Is the first item.
And I do want to welcome everyone here today. Thank y'all for coming. So we'll get on this discussion a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what I'll say is that Stuart McKenzie had started leading some of the discussions related to the properties. So if it's okay, I'll hand it over to him as the planning commissioner to add that review as well.
All right.
When we had a previous meeting at the Board of Supervisors meeting, we went through some of these properties. I'm not sure how far we got through them. If, we could start from the beginning if you'd like, but I believe we got through Lodge Landing, but you know, if you want to start from the beginning, we can start from the beginning.
I had two pieces of property in mind. Poor House Track in the old school board office property.
I'm sorry, what was the first one?
The Poor House Track?
Uh huh.
That and the property in Lodgeburg, which was the old school board office.
Right.
Why not start from the first one?
Well, I don't know how much time you all have. I mean, there are quite a few properties and I don't want to take up your time talking about properties that aren't of interest to the board, but whatever y'all would like to do, I'll do it however you'd like to do.
How do you know we're not interested in some people?
Whatever you all would like to do, I will be glad to.
I want to get started and get all of them, you know?
I think on your list of properties, you had a few that you had highlighted in red to investigate selling.
Yes, sir.
Should that be, I think that probably would be the way we ought to deal with those first.
That sounds like a good idea.
All right, since you've gone to all the trouble to get all that highlighted and go through it, may as well deal with those properties.
I don't know if y'all want to see the maps on the screen or if you just want to discuss, but the first one that we, the planning commission recommended investigating selling was tax map eight, double circle one, lot eighty-three. I've been told and the property description says something about an old gravel pit being down there. It's landlocked and it's located between Bell's Cove Road and Lodge Road.
Do you have it, can you put it on the screen?
I believe we do.
Let everybody see.
Mr. Chairman, if I could bring you a point of order while they're looking for those maps.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to inform the board that a couple of factors or a couple tangibles that are going on throughout the county and throughout Northern Eck. First and foremost, the Northern Eck Planning District Commission is just working on a Northern Eck National Heritage Draft Plan. Part of that draft plan, they're looking at several goals, visions, and objectives that they want to accomplish to be able to capitalize on federal funding, if you will, from the national heritage perspective. So one of the things we're looking at from the Economic Development Commission is trying to dovetail and match up the goals and objectives with all these properties we have and see what best fits for those goals and objectives. That will give us a better chance of success to obtain grant funding, if you will, to be able to do enhancements or if we have to sell them like we're talking about right now, we could do those as well. But from my perspective, it's my suggestion that we take that holistic approach and be able to look and see how the heritage plan maps to the Northern Eck 250 plan and also how the Northern Eck 250 plan and the heritage plan maps with our comprehensive plan as well, too. I think that gives us a better chance of success. Little background about the Heritage Act, it's a, in January 2023, Northern Eck was established as a national heritage. There are only nine other counties in the United States at that time that were labeled as that. Across the United States, there's a total of sixty-three national heritage established counties. So it's a pretty well drawn out process. They're in the draft stages of right now. Mr. Cost and I attended that meeting, that Planning District Commission meeting on Monday, and we're waiting for the draft plan so we can take a look at it and then definitely see how it maps in with all of ours. But I just want to give you that as our framework for how we intend to proceed by looking at all these different properties. And of course, first and foremost is your priorities and what you want to have established as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It should be.
Oh, we haven't got that up yet.
We can get that up.
Greens Creek Landing. And also fishing here.
It's in first section.
It's in the first.
It's third set.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. That's it, back up one. So you see Lodge Road on the southeast corner going in an angle and then Bell's Cove Road is, I believe that road that's inside of the red line on the left-hand side, left center, and then it goes to gravel. The property in question is completely wooded. It's also surrounded by other parcels. We would need to do, well, we need to do some research to see if it has access to Bell's Cove Road or some kind of road access because it's landlocked right now, as in there's no road access, no frontage on a road. The southeastern boundary of that parcel is a stream and of course, stream meanders, but anyway, so it's at the bottom. Let's go to the next map forward, Carl. You'll see that there's, back up one, yeah, you'll see the topography there. They have elevation contour lines. The closer the elevation contour lines together, the steeper the land is. So it's somewhat steep. It's not steep, steep, but it is not very flat and like I said, it's next to the water and the marsh and the swamp and I haven't investigated how much of the land is marsh. But due to those factors, we didn't see how the county could really use it in the future and that's why we said that perhaps you might want to investigate selling. I'm not sure what use it'd be for. I mean, it was a gravel pit or so it says in the property description, but perhaps maybe one of the neighboring landowners would like to purchase it.
That's probably who it would benefit more than anybody else.
That is one point, one and a half acres.
Yeah, one and a half acres.
And the assessed price is $5,000. So it's not a lot of money. Probably due to the fact it's got the marsh in.
Any comments?
I want to give Carl a list. Be able to look through.
So the second parcel is the Poor House Track. Twenty-four, double circle one, zero nine. And that is in the first set, Carl. It's near the end of the first set. Twenty-four, it's a tax map number. There you go. So of course, this is on Dovlet Road, being on both sides of the road. From what I've talked with the Historical Society, the old Poor House Track was located near the antenna on the right-hand side. There's an access road for the public radio, radio station antenna there. And the farm field, they had mentioned in the Historical Society records that there was a nearby farm field. So the best bet is that the structure was somewhere perhaps north of the access road to that radio tower. It's all wooded and that's a way to generate income without selling the property is perhaps you could cut the timber on part of it, maybe on the other side of the road where there's not historic resources. But if you look at that photo, you'll see the kind of green splotches and then kind of the gray splotches. This aerial photograph was taken in April with leaf-off conditions, so the green are coniferous trees. The deciduous trees are the kind of gray because their leaves aren't on. So you can see it's mostly coniferous over there on, well, basically on the left-hand side and most of it there and mixed with deciduous. If you look in the eastern side of the property above Curtland Grove, you'll see a kind of stripe. That's the waterway. That's the creek with marshes along it. So at that, so that little corner is kind of, well, I'm not how useful that corner will be because you'd have to cross the stream to get to it. If you want to go to the next map, we can look at the topography. And as you can see, right around the hundred-foot contour is where the open space is. The green is covered, is forest, and white is open space. It has a couple of structures there. I'm not sure if that was remnants of the Poor House Track, but that's the flattest part of the property along Dovlet Road and adjacent to Dovlet Road. It drops off on both sides, east and west. And if you look on the west side, it really drops off. It gets to be pretty steep. The darker contour line is the hundred foot and then the next one is fifty foot. So there's a pocket a hundred foot on the right-hand side where the radio tower is and a pocket a hundred foot on the left-hand side. And that's all pretty much flat. And then you got drop off to the property line on both sides. And like I said, there's a lot of history behind the Poor House Track. Before there was social security or any kind of safety net, the Poor House Track was where indigent people went that were not able to provide for themselves. The thought was that it's cheaper to do that than to pay, give payments to the poor. They had done that for quite a while and then they instituted the Poor House and then after, I'm not sure how many years, ten years or so, they went back to paying, just paying people and giving them food stuff to help them get along. And then they went back to the Poor House and basically there was a mix of indigent people and sick people in the Poor House. Finally, they ended up, when the state started taking over social services, they got rid of it and the caretaker of the, superintendent of the Poor House actually bought the farm and farmed it for several years after that. There are three articles in the Northumberland Historical Society newsletter, if anyone would like to read them. They have copies. I think you may have to pay to get them copied, but they have the copies over at their office. And talking with the ladies over there, they were pretty sure there's at least one cemetery, if not more, there where the ill people were interred. And so that would, that's something we have to watch out for. That's, I mean, I could tell the story, but we don't want to do any major land disturbance until, I would suggest trying to locate the cemetery and the actual foundation for the building because you don't want, you want to make sure you protect those and don't want to bulldoze those over. Lancaster had a Poor House Track and the Audubon Society found a rare plant on it and now that's the Hickory Hall and Nature Trails. And so their Poor House Track is now a natural area. I'm not sure about Richmond County or Westmoreland County, but every county had a Poor House Track and I don't know how many of them are still intact or how many have been liquidated, but it could be a way for us to tell a story about early social services efforts on part of the county for their citizens. And that is four, 140 acres in total. The assessed value is $297,300. But if you recall, after talking with the Historical Society, I think we should probably keep this for future use or interpretation, but you know, it's up to y'all what you all would like to do with this property.
So you're recommending we hold on to it?
Yes, sir. It's got a lot of history in it.
We had some discussion a few months ago with this piece of property. Supposed to have been looking into what it would take to deem this as a historical site because it would be an ideal place for walking trails and bike trails.
Yes, sir. From what I've read, the Department of Historic Resources is looking to partner with any counties with regards to inventory and documenting their resources. They don't do it for free though. There would be some kind of cost sharing agreement, but they're the, you know, experts and I would recommend talking to them about the best way to proceed.
So that's something you're going to do for us, right?
I can do what, I'll see what I can do. Yes, sir.
Sound good.
Mr. Brand, Mr. McKenzie, also going back to the heritage designation, this is a classic one where we can see words of tie-in for Heritage Trail, interpretive signage, potentially revenue. Well, there's some limited parking, so maybe have paid parking so you can do a walk-through. But definitely something that we'll work with Northern Eck Planning District Commission to see if they have this identified as well compared notes with Mr. McKenzie. Additionally, with 140 acres, it's quite possible, well, let's see if it's feasible, that it can be divided up like Mr. McKenzie alluded to. Part of it used for forestation, the other part used for interpretive trails for people to enjoy as well too. And if we find some nice trees and nice plants, we can designate it as a national park or something like that.
A lot of people enjoy going to a park and being able to walk. I mean, not everybody owns five or 10 acres of land and it would be nice to have a place here in the county where you can take your kids, your grandkids, what have you, and be able to spend the afternoon.
There's a number of grants that would support historic restoration, conservation, and recreation. And trails generally don't directly generate income, but they add to the interest and having something like this Poor House could potentially attract more people here, providing more income for retail, hospitality, locations. There's just a lot there, but it's also 140 acres, so it would be kind of short-sighted maybe if we were to look at this as just one package. There's a lot of opportunity in 140 acres. For example, if you go around and you look at home builders, most of them won't want to build anything if it's not on water and can sell for at least $600,000. So we have a hard time getting affordable housing into the region and 140 acres, I am absolutely certain, without having actually done the work yet, that there is a slice in there that would support 10 or 20 houses that aren't $500,000 each. That's kind of a push towards attracting lower and middle-income people into the area to help recover our workforce that's been dwindling for quite some time. And that's not the only opportunity there. I think there's a lot of investigation that needs to be done on this property and others. I note that there's one that's probably a little bit bigger rock and that's the tri-county area that I don't think has ever actually been used, but that's over 200 acres. And again, that's an opportunity. Now, in both cases, we would be needing infrastructure. There are grants for that as well. If you've got somebody that comes in and wants to do things, there's either a foundation or a government grant that's going to help something, not all of it, but something. Some of them have as little as 25% matching, most have 50% matching. So it's, when we have these types of opportunities that are clearly multifaceted, there's no one thing that you can do with most of these. Some work needs to be done to explore the possibilities and maybe a presentation developed so that we can see the next level of detail on these properties and what may or may not be doable with them.
All right, any other comments?
All right. Okay, the next one is in the second set, Carl. It's near the end of the second set, forty-eight. Double circle one, thirty-three. So this property is east of Dameron Marsh. It's 17.51 acres. The assessed value is $272,600. And this is very, very flat land right before you get to Dameron's Marsh. It has, if you see the south property line of that, you'll see a kind of a bear spot there. That's actually an emergency landing field for spotter pilots. It's very bumpy and got clods of grass, but I reckon you could put a plane down. I'm not sure if you could take it off, but anyway, that's an old runway there. I'm not sure that it's shown on any aviation maps anymore or not, but that's one feature of the property. There's also a tidal pond in the middle of the eastern, northeastern boundary that splits, the park line splits. You can see it's mostly covered with coniferous trees. The areas that don't have coniferous trees on, I would bet that that is marshland. So it's really low, swampy, wet in the spring land and since we have a natural area preserve of Dameron Marsh, that type of experience is taken care of in the county, just a few thousand feet down the road if you want to experience that. Of course, being marshy and swampy, there's a lot of mosquitoes and no CMs and things of that nature and it's really not suited for ball fields or anything like that because of the marshy nature. The water depth there is very shallow off, if you can see the sand through the water there, the sandbars. There's a bit of deep water off to the western, northwestern edge, but it would be a pretty long pier to get to that deep water. So that's why the planning commission recommended selling it. I've been told in my previous job, when I worked for the Planning District Commission, that the Department of Conservation and Recreation is looking for properties for their natural areas and state parks inland from where they are because they know they're going to lose land to sea level rise, so they want to expand their upland holdings. So it's possible that since it's adjacent to the Dameron Marsh Natural Area Preserve that the state might be interested in purchasing it. That is, if that's what you all decide to do. If you want us to go to the next map, Carl, it's, I don't know, yeah, the topographic map is nondescript because it's flat as a pancake and that five over on the left-hand side is a supplemental contour, the dash line is the five-foot contour. So all of this land is under five feet. And we know what happens when tropical storms come with storm surge. So that's all I really have for that parcel.
So is the property to the northeast, is that the state-owned property or is that privately owned?
I believe that's state-owned. I believe that's a beginning of National, the National Natural Area Preserve.
That's state-owned property.
I think, let me check.
Probably need to contact them if they'd be interested into it.
It would certainly be more enticing to them if there wasn't a piece in between.
It would certainly be more enticing to them if there wasn't a piece in between.
Tell them we'll make them a deal with it without mosquitoes. They will pick you up and carry you away.
Gentlemen, you have any other comments on it?
Yes, sir. You'll see forty-eight, one, thirty-two is not coming up in the land records, but if you look on the right-hand side, you'll see forty-eight, double circle one, thirty-one. I think that's combined with that. I'm not sure, but I know the thirty-one is Department of Conservation and Recreation. And when I type thirty-two, lot thirty-two is not an option. So I think it might be combined with thirty-one.
All right. Gentlemen, what do you think? Check with the state, says they'd be interested?
We have one more property. It's fifty-three, double circle one, one A. It's right when you come into Indian Creek. On the left-hand side, before you get to the maintenance sheds. I'm not sure what the history of this. There was some speculation that it might have been for, when the subdivision was first created, for a possible sewage treatment plant. I don't know how that would work because it's not near any water to take the effluent out. But it is 6.355 acres and it's fifteen, assessed at $15,900. It is another flat parcel, and as you can see, it's mostly coniferous. There's a little bit of deciduous next to the road, Bluff Point Road, but most of the interior is coniferous trees. And if you look in the next map, you'll see there, it's flat. There is no topography there at all. And I just don't know the history of how we, how the county became the owners of that.
I got nothing. I wonder if the surrounding landowner would be interested in that property?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who owns it, but you never know.
Since that one piece there is kind of cut right into that large piece, if they had that, it would make that, that a much better piece of property then.
Yeah. Wouldn't have a donut in the hole in the middle of it.
Yep. It's got a piece taken right out of it.
If I may ask you a question, on the left-hand side, all those other lots, is that part of Indian Creek where the homes are? The golf course would be...
The golf course is that one, one of the holes is that long polygon right next to Bluff Point Road. Go back one photo. The pond, water feature, sand traps, things of that nature. And that's all zoned, are for residential, recreational.
I thought would be, I wonder if Indian Creek would be interested, given the fact that they just ran the AJGA, that's probably ideal play for them to set up facilities, potential temporary housing there, trailers for the golfers, so they don't have to travel so far. Wonder if that'd be, give them first right of refusal if that's feasible.
Six, 6.3 acres. Good little size piece of property, 6.3 acres.
All right, any other comments on what would the board like to do with it? I guess one thing to do is ask the surrounding landowner if they'd be interested into it. If they would be, you know, if they'd make us an offer onto it.
Probably make a location for a plot house.
Well, I believe that, that's already been, I thought y'all...
Just got that sold.
I thought that was...
Just settled on that. Weeks ago. Stuart, are these all the land properties in Northumberland County?
Todd Thomas gave me the list, and the problem with, with trying to find all the properties is that some of them are under Board of Supervisors, some are under North umberland County Board, some are under Northumberland County School Board. There's a whole different, if you know databases, if it has one letter different, it's a separate record. So there's a, I would say it's a majority of them. I don't, I don't know of any other one except possibly a section of land that was left over from VDOT down at Glee Point, but I believe that is a sliver and I don't know if there's any way to go about it. But yes, sir, I would say that...
I don't see the Glee Point fishing gear on here.
It's there.
We call it Glee Point, it's actually on the Waikamaia side.
Yeah, I don't see it either. There's that remnant of the boat ramp north of Glee Point, but...
Just for further reference, might as well stick it on there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
These properties, if and when any of them are sold, including the one that was just sold last week, has it been any designation for the, what will be done with the monies received from these properties as of yet, or is it just going into the general fund to be spent on school buses and...
I know we had discussed of putting this money into water access, but we never really made the final decision if that's where we wanted it to go.
Water access is a good start, but it's certainly something for the, for the people of North umberland County.
Yep.
Have we put together a motion?
You want to put that in a motion?
Yes, sir, I would like to put that into a motion.
All right.
Basically, I said that the, any and all monies that are received from the property sold of Northumberland County be put into a special fund to be dispersed by the Board of Supervisors, how they see fit, in some type of water access or recreational facilities for the people, citizens of Northumberland County.
All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? All right, no discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
So with that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, that being done, Mr. Johnson mentioned grants. So now that we've identified funds, they will be matching funds for those grants to grow the month. And that's why we needed to do that.
Yep.
I would like to see these properties that are in red, except for the poor ash track, be offered up and to be sold. After looking at them, I don't know anything that we would be able to do with any of those properties. That would give us a good starting point to be able to apply for some grants and have the funding to back it for the grants.
If we went down out of Dameron's Marsh, if we can check with the state, see if they'd be interested in that. The one on the left side of Indian Creek, check with the surrounding landowner or Indian Creek too, see if they'd be interested into it. If that doesn't, if neither one of them wants it, I guess we gotta always put a for-sale sign on it.
Anything Northumberland County School Board, we can't deal with anybody.
No.
They shouldn't be on here for the date.
No. All right, any other comments, gentlemen? Any comments from EDC?
Yeah, there's three or four properties that I'd like to just highlight here a little bit. First one being the old sheriff's building out here. That thing's been sitting there doing nothing. It's not making any money for anybody right now, but it could be. One of the things I've been looking into the last year or two has been veterans' clinics. Now, a county-owned veterans clinic could do multiple things, and that is not just services to veterans, but also for the economically indigent and therefore medically indigent. The point being is that that's, those are services that the county has to bill for, either the state or the federal government, and thereby gains some income, probably some pretty good income. Yes, there's challenges in getting there. You'd have to get approvals, you'd have to staff it, you'd have to, there's a whole bunch of things that go into it. But until somebody, some group of somebodies does the work to figure out what the path is to get from point A to point B, it's gonna continue to sit there. And my point is, is that we've got a lot of things here where it's been recommended to keep, but what are we gonna do with it if it's not already doing something? So there's, there's work that needs to be done there. The next property that, it's actually three, but it's all lying under the same umbrella, that's Vermar Beach. One of the lots that would be twenty-one, dash, twenty-seven, that is in the neighborhood that is adjacent to Vermar Beach and is so far removed as to kind of be, I don't know, why is it there? Why is it counted as part of Vermar Beach when it's unusable for that particular purpose? The next one is, we're not up there. Lot twenty-eight, which is identified as a parking lot for Vermar Beach. But if you look at it through a recent satellite picture, or just drive down there, lot twenty-eight, a half an acre, is nowhere that I would park my car. Fully unusable. And the rest of it, we have point six, seven, nine acres allowed. And there's problems with that. I'm told that the steps that go down to the beach area from up top are decaying and they're rotten. The vegetation isn't well-maintained, and so there's a usability problem. And again, this is a, it's, it's not in the greatest location. When you can get down there on your own, it's a nice place to sit for a bit. But it needs, what we don't want to have happen is have people come here. Let's say that they come and they stay at somebody's vacation rental. It's the first time they've ever come to Northumberland County because they'd like to change it up every once in a while. And they go to Vermar Beach. Are they gonna say, "I'd like to go back," or are they gonna say, "I'm never coming back"? This is one of those things where we can put on our best show or just completely miss the show. So that one needs some investigation into what can be done, or is it better to let it go, is what I'm suggesting. And that covers my two biggest rocks. I did quite a bit of digging on some of these things. Anyways, so the remnant boat ramp is the one that y'all were looking for earlier, over there on Glee Point. That one's also difficult to see good use coming out of because it is so skinny and narrow and it's, it's, you could probably put a bench, then that was, is about as wide as it is. So there's, I, what I'm getting to, the underlying current here is that before anybody really throws the hammer down and says, "Let's sell all of these things," if they are to be sold, maybe optimizing their configuration on paper, zoning adjustments, subdivision of the larger pieces, so that you will definitely get more out of smaller pieces of land being sold than you will one big one. These things need to be looked at. And I would look to the board to give direction to both the planning commission and the EDC to do that kind of work.
Comments from the board?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. State's motion.
Make a motion that we get the planning commission and the EDC, give them the authority to look into these properties and come up with a game plan on how to best use them.
All right. I just wanted to focus here, then I'll get them some. Mr. Williams, you second it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Got a motion and a second? Any other conversations? If none, all those in favor say aye. Not aye, all those against? All right. No, got a little bit of work ahead of you. So does the planning commission.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Tadlock, would you have Curtis check Vermar Beach out tomorrow?
He's checked on it. He just got with me yesterday. The flat pool down at Vermar has dropped, and he's working on getting that raised back up and secure.
All right.
He has checked on it.
How about that grass that grows up on the rock down there? Is that, is that four or five feet tall again?
I will ask him about that, we'll get that straight. Usually he's that cut, at least annually.
Because we cut it last year and it made a big improvement down there. And last time I was down there, which was probably a couple of months ago, there was some trash laying around.
Do we have a trash can down there?
We, we did at one time, but we removed it because we were having... We, we did at one time, but we removed it because we were having problems with maintaining the, the trash, the trash.
Did he say anything about trash when he was down there over there?
I, we were focused on the platform, this is safety of the platform, so we did not secure the trash. But I'll follow up.
All right. All right, what else, gentlemen? Anything else on these properties?
I got one comment. For the, for the areas that have actually, other counties, whatever you have actually put forth a time and effort into making some changes, it's benefited. It's past time that we do that. And, and I'm gonna tell you, going through school, and it's one thing that I've always learned in our character with, Mr. Long always talked about a PMA, a positive mental attitude. You know, in doing these projects, you gotta have a positive attitude. If you look for every reason you can why something can't happen, it's not gonna happen.
Exactly.
We gotta find the reasons why it's got to happen.
I believe we have that reason.
And that's, that's part of that positive attitude.
Mm-hmm.
And I know back in the day, if you didn't have it, you'd have to run a little bit. I can't run you all, Mr. Long can't run you, but.
Oh, yeah, he was famous for that.
But we, we've got to, it's time, it's past time.
Yeah, well, we are making progress on this, so now we'll get a little bit more progress if we can get something done.
Awesome. Appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on these properties from Eva Boyd? All right. Nothing else, we can move on to the next item, Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir. I don't know if you want to take a short break and allow the EDC to, I mean, they're more than welcome to stay, I just didn't.
Let's go ahead and have a, have a ten-minute recess.
Sounds good.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we call this meeting backyard. Tadlock?
Yes, sir. Next item on the agenda is the supplemental appropriation transfer of funds, school request. And Ms. Ashton and Mr. Regan are present.
How you doing?
Good evening, how are you all doing?
All right.
Good evening to the board and to the community members assembled. We will have Jack Reagan from UHY, who will be coming before you to go over the budget transfers and special appropriations in detail via the presentation that you all had before you.
All right, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present this request to you this evening. You should have in your package, I think you've got a series of charts in addition to the PowerPoint slide deck. You know, I'd like to call your attention to the chart. What I'm gonna do is to walk you through what the request is first, then I will walk you through how we derived the request, and then I'll summarize the request again. Just, it's, 'cause there are gonna be some numbers flowing through here. So I'd like you to forward to the slide that's called Second Appropriation Request, it's probably the last table. As a result of our analysis, where we projected fiscal year 25 expenditures, so those are expenditures that have already been incurred and charged in fiscal year 25, and there are still some other accrued expenses that will be charged against 25 for payments made later here in July and August and so forth. What we have projected is that there are certain categories where there is a projected surplus. Those categories are operations and maintenance and facilities. There are certain categories where we are projecting deficits. Those categories are instruction, administration and health, and pupil transportation. What we are requesting is that 100,000 of the surplus from operations and maintenance be reprogrammed from operations and maintenance to pupil transportation. As you're aware, if we run a surplus in one category, we're not allowed to use that to offset a deficit in another category without coming back to this board, because that's the way you appropriated the money over to the schools in fiscal year 25. Similarly, we're requesting that $100,000 from the facility surplus be reprogrammed to pupil transportation. All right, so that takes care of the reclasses. That has no net impact on additional monies being requested by the schools. But that leaves us with still a deficit, a projected deficit in instruction, and a small projected deficit in administration and health. So what we're requesting is an additional $380,000 for instruction, and an additional $30,000 for administration and health. So a total supplemental appropriation of $410,000. All right? However, if you see that last column, all right, which is the column projected surplus deficit after second supplemental appropriation request. The goal, the end goal of our analysis was to come to you with the reclassification request, the reprogramming request, and the supplemental appropriation request that resulted in all positive numbers in that last column. All right? So that's what we've achieved here, and we're projecting that if we land this the way that we expect to land it, we should end the year with roughly a $280,000 surplus made up of all the different categories. That will be returned to the county after the audit is over, you know, where the, the numbers are officially blessed. So if, you know, one way you could look at this is that the net supplemental appropriation request on this is roughly $130,000. Okay, so that's the ask. You know, that is the request, and I want to take just five, 10 minutes of time to walk you through the other tables to show you how we got to the projected numbers. Okay, is that a fair use of everybody's time? All right, so I want to start now with the table, if you go back to the first table, that is called appropriated budget summary as of June 22, 2025. So it'll be the, the very first table. There we go. So we, we started with, all right, how much was awarded to the schools? How much was appropriated to the schools? We've broken that up into the two columns, the original budget request and the supplemental request, and we've broken that down by category. So you can see all of those. So we are working off of an approved budget from this board of 22,520 and change, broken down into those categories. All right, so that's the budget piece. If you go to the next slide, we begin to build the expenditures for the year that we're gonna compare against that budget. So the first column you see there is the fiscal year 2025 schools expenditures per the county. That's a report that the county treasurer ran for us that is as of, I believe it's July 22, all the expenditures that the treasurer's office has reported as charged to the fiscal year 25 budget for schools. We're starting with that number. All right? One thing I want to call, well, a couple of things I want to call your attention to are the numbers for federal cares, for special appropriation, and for federal funds. You will see that those numbers, there's 195,000, 150,000, and 535,000 of expenditures recorded in those lines. But if you go back to the prior slide, you will see that this board did not appropriate any funds into those categories. So that means that those funds, when they were recorded, were misclassified. Okay, when those expenditures were recorded, they were misclassified. So the first thing that we had to do was to go back and reclassify those expenditures that were incurred and drop them into the budget category that this board appropriated those funds for. So that's what you see in the CARES Act reclass column, the special appropriations column, and the federal funds reclass column. What we've done is we've taken those monies out of those three buckets and moved them into instruction, admin, and health, pupil transportation, et cetera. That's why the bottom line on those three columns is zero, right? Because it's not any additional expenditures, we're just moving expenditures around into the proper category. So now we can have what I call an apples-to-apples comparison. This is my spending to date per the county's records that matches up to the way that the board has appropriated the funds. Okay, everybody with me so far? All right. Then if we go to the next table, it's called July 22, 2025 county expenditures adjusted for reclasses and accruals, I have to come up with as long a title as I possibly can for the table. What we're doing there is we're starting with that adjusted expenditures column after my reclasses. There are certain expenditures that I'm going to incur from today going forward that I'm going to charge against 25 that I haven't spent the money for yet, right? Accounts payable, accruals, those sort of things. So we've got three columns, there's some annuity payout, there are some MOE payments that are gonna be made, and there's a payroll deduction discrepancy that looks like we may owe the Virginia Retirement System some money that we're working through getting that exactly reconciled, but those three payments need to be charged against 25, but they're gonna be made some point later in July or in August, maybe early September, something like that. All right? So that's one group of accruals. The second group of accruals is regular old accounts payable that we expect to come in right now that we have on an open purchase orders report. So they have encumbered these funds, so they've been charged against the budget, but we haven't gotten the invoices yet, but we expect to pay these. Now, you'll see that this is split up into two columns. The first column is everything that is currently in the system as a purchase order commitment that we expect to spend 2025 funds on. But we have gone back to all of those owners of the purchase orders and said, "Do you absolutely expect to spend 100% of the money that is on those purchase orders?" Some of them, they said yes, some of them, they said, "No, we need to write those off." Some of them said, "We need a little bit of it, but we don't need all of it." That's this column, the purchase order corrections per the data call, the final time we did that was on July the 9th. So think of that as we've got this bucket of purchase orders and we're gonna give some of that money back to the budget. So the net impact, we expect to pay about $90,000 of additional payables, net-net. All right? So now what I've done, I've taken my actual expenditures, I've added my accruals to those, and this last column of adjusted expenditures, that is the amount of money by category that I expect to be charged at the end of the day to the 25 budget. And then if you go to the, the next slide, which is current fiscal year 25 budget status after reclassifications and accruals, you'll see I took that fully adjusted expenditures, loaded up with all my accruals, compared that to the budget categories, right, from that first slide, and I've got the difference. You see some negatives, you see some positives. And again, going back to my, my final slide, what we're taking is we're gonna take 200,000, well, we're gonna take 100,000 from operations and maintenance, so we're gonna bring that surplus down from 135 to 35. We would like to take 100,000 from facilities to take that down to 53, reprogram that up to alleviate the negative 144,000 that's in the pupil transportation line. So that's the reclass that we're asking for the reprogramming support for. And then we're asking for 380,000 for instruction, additional appropriation, and 30,000 for administration and health. That will take both of those numbers to a, to a surplus. If you go to the, again, to the final slide where we have all of that, you can see again that all of that number, all those numbers in the final column are positive. And the last thing I'd like to reiterate is, what we didn't want to have happen is to come here with an extraordinarily precise request, that we then have to come back and get another one, and another one, and another one, as we're trying to land all this. We left it broad enough so that we've got a little bit of cushion in each of those categories, but what we are committing to do is when we land this, we're gonna land this with surpluses. If you approve the reprogramming request and you approve the supplemental appropriation request, when we land this at roughly $280,000 of surplus, that will be returned to the county. So the net at the end of this ask is, is my mind, around $130,000. So I tried to break it down into manageable parts, 'cause it's a lot of numbers, but hopefully you see the logic that we, we tried to build for this. We appreciate the board's consideration of this request, and we'll answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions from the board?
Just so I'm clear, so we make the two special appropriations for 280, uh, 380,000 and 30,000 dollars. And we were to get in return the 280,000 dollars if all this plays out the way you see it.
Right.
Then the net would be 130,000 dollars, is that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yep.
Of new money from the county.
Of new money, net at the end of the day for, for 25. Yes, sir.
Can you speak to the payroll deduction discrepancy a little bit? Is this?
I think this has been a cumulative difference between the amount that has been deposited with the Virginia Retirement System and the amount that has actually been withheld and paid. I, I think there are some additional funds that need to be moved over to the Virginia Retirement System. We're beginning to dig into, to that. I've just got a high-level calculation that's been done by staff, but we're in the process of, of going through that reconciliation now. That number's probably on the high end. I think the number will be less than that when, when it actually comes in and we dig into what the, the actual nature of reconciling items are.
And the 380,000 dollars in instruction, that, speak to?
Overspending, underbudgeting, you know, under, underbudgeting of some personnel costs, overspending of accounts payable costs, you know, regular vendor purchases and things like that, for which there was no original budget authority granted. I will tell the board that I did come down and participate last week in a, gosh, it ended up being a little over half-day of basically fiscal year 26 spending rigor, you know, the process that everybody was going to be going through in monitoring the budget, getting purchase orders entered timely, when requests are being made for additional purchases. First question is, was it budgeted for? If it wasn't budgeted for, are there other places that you will be able to save those monies so that you can take this request that were originally budgeted for that you no longer need? That was led very actively by the superintendent, who set the very, very strong tone at the top around controlling the spending to the amount that is in the fiscal year 26 budget. So it was a very strong, very direct message that came from the superintendent at that time, and I, I got to be in the, in the back and, and actually play the bad cop. That was the good cop. I got to play the bad cop and say, "Yeah, this is the way it's going to have to happen this year."
So any of these corrections, they're gonna follow in? So any of these corrections, they're going to follow into '26 to make sure that it all?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, one of the things that we're doing is making sure that any of these items that are, were not in '25, that we're asking for the supplemental amounts for, any of the purchase orders that come in for '26, we're asking specifically where they were in the budget build. So, yeah, that is a standard question that is before we approve the purchase order to be entered into the system and for the commitment to be made to spend those funds.
Questions, gentlemen? I'm just thinking.
Hopefully, the logic of how we went about developing the final projection of the spending makes sense to everybody. I tried to build it up in a, because I think the last time we were in front, we had a PowerPoint slide that was about this wide, and I tried to build it down into a couple of, if you remember the old Frank Perdue commercial, tried to break it down into a couple of pieces, parts, so that we had very discreet parts of the calculation that made it easier for everybody to digest as you're considering this request.
Where's the money going to come from?
That's the big question.
You know where it's going to come from.
Stadler, any comments? I know you haven't had a chance to look through this.
I have not gotten a chance to review it.
Is this just coming in today?
No, sir.
So you're looking probably, what, for $410,000 to come back from the county again? That's additional funding?
To start with, yes, sir.
To start with?
Well, and then the 280 is coming back.
Well, if we're getting 280, why do you need 410?
Well, I mean, we can try and land it, you know, to the nth degree, but if we miss it by a dollar, we'll be in violation of the appropriation. So we're trying to build in at least a little bit of cushion.
All right, you have some of these things in here. Let's see. What was it? Where was I? Miscellaneous spending was one of them. What was all that about? Just tell me miscellaneous spending. That didn't tell me anything, really. Supplemental appropriation for miscellaneous overspending.
I took it that's the reason that they're requesting the supplemental appropriation because the overspending is how it was worded. That's, to me, that's how I took.
It's kind of what you said at the beginning.
Yeah.
Yep, now, that's what I'm looking at. I just want some clarification on it because you got 380, and you got 30, so that's 410. All right, let's see where that's coming from. But any breakdown on where this money was spent, or where this money should have been or will be spent, besides just what items were purchased?
I mean, I'd have to go back through and look specifically at that. I haven't had a chance to do that. I mean, it's, you know, it's the last, you know, couple of hundred thousand dollars of payables that's out there that's really driving the deficit as it exists today.
I don't know, I'm just...
How soon do you need a decision to move forward?
I'm sorry?
How soon do you need a decision to move forward on this?
I mean, I would hope the board would be able to consider the request tonight, you know, because the alternative here is the, you know, going to have to keep holding payments for fiscal '25. In this case, there's going to be the MOE payments of, you know, 243, 697. They don't have the funds. They don't have the legal authority to disperse those funds as it stands now. And then the other, you know, look at the $90,000 that I'm projecting is the net difference between the amount that's currently on the open purchase orders, less the amount that we are going to cancel off of those purchase orders because they're no longer needed. If you look on the second, I guess it's the third to last slide, the one that's got the adjusted for reclassifications and accruals, the two columns of 295, less the 203, you know, those are amounts that can't be paid.
So we need to remember, this started out that $1.3 million was going to come into the contingency fund to pay off the overspending to close it into the budget, correct? Originally, we were looking at $1.3 million.
Originally. That was a number I heard initially as well.
Okay. So with your work, you've gone in and you found additional dollars, we just got to move them in the right category. And you got a cushion in it. $110,000 will close this year with, I guess, a minimum of 280 coming back to the county.
Right.
Yep. You know, I don't want to spend any more money than anybody else does in here, but we need to close this year and be done with it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Now, my question to you, Mr. Regan, in the meeting that you sat in with Dr. Leslie, are you confident there are policies and practices and clear expectations that this will not, this type of work will not continue?
Well, if the, if the next item on there, which is to approve the contract with us to continue in the role that we've got for another 90 days or so as the acting, sort of the finance department, every single purchase order is going to come through my staff, and we're going to figure out where it is actually recorded in the budget before that purchase order gets approved.
And I think one of Mr. Hany's questions was, we've really never got a good, clear answer to where, how was the money spent? We knew it went to purchase things, but what? And we may not ever find that out.
Well, I think as we are working to close the '25 budget and we begin to encumber the funds against the '26 budget, we will be able to ask those questions on, okay, was this in the budget, you know, for '25? You know, I'll have my staff as we're going through and looking at those accounts payable that go out the door. And as the '26 purchase orders come in the door, one of the questions we'll ask is, in addition to, was it in '26? Was this in '25? If so, by how much and how did we land it? So that we can try and deconstruct that variance for you and give you a little bit of insight as to how this happened. But our primary objective is going to be making sure that it doesn't happen again as we begin to encumber those '26 funds. But I hear the board's desire to have a little, a greater insight into how this happened, and I'll make sure that our staff, who I know are on the line, are going to take a note of that and make sure that we keep an eye on, were these expenses incurred as well in '25? And if so, you know, how much were they budgeted for, if at all?
I heard you say that Dr. Leslie did, in fact, stress the need for tightening down, so to speak, I guess is a good word. Does that end?
Yeah, very much so.
All right, I'm going to ask you a question, sir. And you can answer it however you feel necessary. But my question to you is, did that fall on deaf ears?
I can only speak to what I've seen going forward.
Yes, yes.
I think folks have gotten religion on this one. I think folks understand the dire nature that the previous culture of spending has put the schools and the county in, and that there is a very strong focus on delivering, you know, high-quality educational services fiscally prudent, and that folks are not, you know, in the past where the, you know, the thought may be, well, we need to hire a new position, or we need to make a certain purchase. They know they're going to have to do as much or more with what they've got or less. So that message has come very loud and clear from the superintendent. All of the key managers who control a lot of this spending were in that meeting and heard that very strong message from the superintendent. So, yeah, I have every confidence that that will occur. And again, we're going to be in the middle of the process because it all starts with entering that purchase order. And there is not going to be a purchase order entered in the system until someone from my team says, yes, we see where that's in the budget, and this can be entered into the system. And that is the commitment of the funds legally to spend.
I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I certainly am not going to settle for anything any less. And I don't think the citizens of this county is going to.
I get it.
I think they've had enough.
I get it.
I think they've had enough.
And on top of that, the seats that we're sitting in, I take that back, the seat that I'm sitting in, it's important to me that the people of North Horn County know where, excuse me, know where the fault lies. And I would appreciate when we hear back from you that you or your staff vividly describes where this overspending has occurred.
Yep. Message heard loud and clear.
And has the, has the school board realized that they need to learn to follow a budget and start spending like they should and take responsibility?
You know, I have not had a chance to meet with the school board yet in this role that I've been playing. Just the timing of the board meetings has not synced up. You know, I certainly have as a top priority, you know, building out charts like this that will be presented as part of a monthly package to the, to the school board where they see where all these monies are being spent and to have a very robust budget-to-actual discussion ready for the board at their meeting. So, yeah, this should be, at least when I present to the board on behalf of the superintendent, you know, will be front and center of any presentation that I make, is that budget-to-actual analysis and making sure that they understand, you know, that these monies, what has happened in the past can't happen again.
And that's very important.
Yeah.
I've said that very often. The school board was not involved. You know, they need to be involved in those positions, know what's going on. A lot of them didn't know.
Yeah. And I'm working closely with the superintendent to build a series of monthly reports because it goes deeper than the school board. I mean, they're, they sit at the top of the pyramid.
Right.
But, you know, the superintendent is going to need to get a certain level of reports that she actively monitors. And then everybody that works for her who owns their budgets are going to need to get a set of high-quality monthly financials where they know what's going on. So part of what we're doing as we are entering this budget this year and beginning to enter the purchase orders is to build out what this monthly financial reporting package is going to look like. That is going to go to school board management, to the leadership team, to the, to the school board, come over as well to the county administrator and his staff, and make its way to you as well. We've invited ourselves to the weekly leadership meetings, make sure that we are in that meeting weekly where we're going to talk about all of these financial management issues with the senior leadership team and keep that focus on things. And that's going to happen weekly.
I would like to see when the time comes and we have the person in place and your services will no longer need it, and I don't mean that in a bad way.
Oh, my goal on this is, and, I mean, you know, you've opened the door a little bit on that one, so I'm going to walk through it, is part of what we are doing in all of this is, as we identify, and I'll take a case in point, which is just uploading the budget into RDA, was not something that current staff had.
Right.
The capacity to be able to do. We've built a policies and procedures document with screenshots, with all sorts of things that says, here is how you load the budget. We're going to do exactly the same thing around purchase orders and all of the different monthly financial reporting. We're going to leave behind documents that folks will be able to follow and adhere to. I would humbly suggest, and you're probably going along those same lines, what will need to happen for a period of time as this financial reporting environment matures at the schools, we reestablish the credibility around financial reporting with everyone, is that some sort of regular monitoring from the outside come in and say, yeah, it looks like things are still getting recorded time, and it looks like projections are working well, you know, some sort of monitoring that would, would be, I think, very relevant for when the full-time finance director gets hired to help that person through that process.
And I also think it's very important that, that when this comes to an end, that on your way out, that we have a joint meeting. I feel that it needs to be both boards in attendance. I think a report needs to be given by you. I think it, I would like to see it at the school auditorium because I think it'd be very important for the school staff to attend. It's been a lot of concerns, folks that work in the school system wanting to know what's going on, really not knowing what's happened.
Right.
We got a lot of citizens that are concerned. They would like to know as well. This room wouldn't hold them if they would choose to attend.
Yeah.
But I think that ought to be offered.
I think that's a realistic request, and, you know, you could condition the supplemental appropriation approval on having some sort of joint meeting like that, maybe upon the presentation of the '25 audit results. That may be a very nice coda, point for that, that, you know, something that, you know, just as you introduce that concept occurs to me off the top of my head, might be a logical place to do that.
I think so. I think so.
But make sure that you and your group feel this time, they have done enough, but not what someone from another group said, well, I think we have enough, you can leave. You know, make sure with you and your group that, hey, I think this is the time.
I feel a tremendous amount of ownership on this. So, yeah, there, you're, I'm not going to be swayed to move on any faster than I feel it necessary to do so. And if something comes in that we don't believe is part of the budget, I will have no problem at all saying, hey, I can't see this in the budget, and we're not going to approve it. And I know, even though, you know, she is, she is not present, I know from the tone that the superintendent said at this past meeting, if we say it's, it's not in the budget, she's going to have our back, and she will not authorize that transaction to occur. she's going to have our back and she will not authorize that transaction to occur. I realize the importance of the role that we are temporarily playing and feel more than a little bit of pressure around that. But, you know, we're, we're ready to handle the, the responsibility.
So with bringing someone in when we hire a finance director, in your opinion, how long should y'all stay around to get this person in position? Get them comfortable? Get them in the routine and get them and?
I think once we're hired, once that position is hired, depends on the level of experience. But, you know, a month or two transition time after that and then potentially, you know, a little bit of monitoring time on a quarterly basis to come in and, and look at, at things just to make sure that things have not deteriorated, I, I think is, is probably a reasonable amount of time.
And that answered my second question is, once they're cut loose, when do you think it'd be a proper time to come back to reevaluate and quarterly?
Probably quarterly for at least the, the first, you know, through, through the end of 20, fiscal year '26.
Okay.
Something like that. Again, just sort of spitballing on this one, but that, that seems to be a, a reasonable, reasonable amount of time to monitor.
I just don't want to see this get back the way it was. Not going to let it. Uh, not going to let it. I hope not, sir. That's why we've talked about this monitoring and control. To see to it that it doesn't?
Yeah, the, the old saw back when I first started in this business many, many years ago was, you know, what gets measured gets done. You know, governments measure a whole lot of things now. It's what gets monitored gets done. You know, it's, if you're, if you're watching somebody doing what they're supposed to be doing and they relentlessly execute against what they know they're supposed to do and you've got that internal audit monitor watching them, it's amazing how things get done.
Yeah, but old habits are hard to break.
Uh, until, until you hit the bottom.
We've got some old habits, we've got some new people stepping in and I've got faith in the new people.
It depends on who enjoys.
Can't change, you have to replace them.
And I, I would again, would like to commend the superintendent for the tone that she has set. You know, she's very new in, in that role and has absolutely set the crystal-clear expectations about the, the type of spending that has occurred in the past is no longer going to occur. It's not, it cannot, it will not, so.
That's what we want to hear.
That's, she, she has set that message loud and clear and I, I get to be the enforcer of that, at least as long as I'm in the role.
There you go, there you go.
I didn't introduce myself, I assumed everyone knew me. I'm Javonda Ashton, Assistant Superintendent. I'd just like to reiterate. Dr. Leslie has a great support team. I'm as her Assistant Superintendent and very, and I'm very knowledgeable about the budget and the purchase order. I actually am the one that led the purchase order initiation and monitoring training. That was the first time any of our department leads had ever had training. So we're already putting processes and procedures in place to make sure that these deficiencies and things that have happened does not happen again. And we're making it our goal to make sure that it doesn't happen again. We are committed to this school system. We're committed to this county, I can say that. I've been in this, uh, school system for about 20 years. So I'm invested here and we understand it and we've seen that the decisions that have been made has a ripple effect. It doesn't just affect our students, it affects our staff, it affects our community. And it then begins to affect our households. So I will say on behalf of Dr. Leslie, I believe she's online, in the school system, that we are committed to make sure that the things that happened in the past do not happen again because it, because it affects everyone and we don't want to see that happen in our community. So we want to be responsible, we want to be held accountable, and we want to make sure that things are done right.
Well, you got some good people working in the schools too with finances.
Yeah, we just, you know, you know, the taxpayer is the one that ends up having to pay all this and we know we're all taxpayers. And eight cent tax increase this year was not good. And you know where most of it had to come from? Or what caused the problem with the school system? And no, no salary increase for county employees on top of that? And it's hard feelings all over this county about this. And this just cannot happen again. I'm not going to allow it to happen myself. I'm going to fight it tooth and nail, you know? I'm just not going to give in, but.
Dr. Leslie is online and she asks if she could be unmuted if she wants to speak.
Yes, she can certainly speak. I'd like to hear from her.
Thank you.
Dr. Leslie?
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
All right, how about you?
Great, I just wanted to chime in. I have been sitting here listening, of course, and I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Regan and Ms. Ashton said. We, we hear, we understand, we are there with you and understanding. And I have made it the top priority. Everything now is following, you know, those finance steps of making sure that we are being fiscally responsible, that we are not spending outside of our budget. And at some point when you guys, when UHY is able to get through that, we have seen, I have seen in putting together the budget where in previous years there were areas that were being spent outside and we have rectified that. So I think that that will come to fruition and will come to light when we're able to get those reports together. But just wanted to chime in, I'm actually on my case in, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that I hear you, Ms. Ashton hears you, our directors understand what is expected as far as finance is concerned. And it is, it is where our focus is in supporting our kiddos and doing that in a way that's fiscally responsible. So just wanted to reiterate that.
All right, any board members have any questions for Dr. Leslie? Dr. Leslie, thank you very much.
I appreciate you letting me speak, thank you.
Any board members have any other comments or questions? I know Mr. Regan has done an excellent job on, on his presentation as usual. Yeah, he does a very good job.
This one scared me a little bit. I haven't been nervous for a presentation in a long time. This one, this one had me on edge, but I appreciate your voice consideration.
Well, I see we got a couple, two or three citizens here. Do you have any comments? Yes.
Thank you, John Koss from the Planning Commission. One of the really important things that we've talked about over the last three and a half months, you may recall it when you asked me to come and present to you about three and a half months ago, I talked about the fact that the most important things here are trust and accountability, which we ain't had any of for a long time around here. So something really important happened tonight. Jack got up and talked about some of the things that have been put in place to ensure that the staff people start doing what needs to be done in a proper way. But a key part of all of this is that someday he's not going to be part of this process. And what Jack gave you tonight was transparency, accountability, and his word. What you need to ensure is that when he's out the door and his replacement here, you've got a full-time finance director for the county and for the school system, that that person is not only empowered, but strongly encouraged to be as honest and direct with you as, as Jack was tonight. Because if we get any tippiness, any bullshit, we're going to be back where we started from. So I encourage you to make sure that, maybe contrary to what Jack said about a quarterly review, uh-uh, monthly. You got to make sure this year, this fiscal year works before you can really assure that you, you restore the trust and accountability that you're looking for. So I think you need to have very direct access and make it crystal-clear that the finance director is going to be as candid as Jack was tonight. And I hope you do that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. All right, Regan, you got any other comments? You going to pull the money out of the sky for us?
I haven't looked on the county side at all, no, sir. Uh, but no, appreciate the, the candid conversation and, yeah, with the, at, at this stage of my career, I can't be anything other than candid. But I've always, as an auditor, our, our word and our integrity is our value proposition. So I appreciate the, the kind words. And again, very much appreciate the opportunity that the county has provided to UHY to serve, serve this board, serve the school board, and serve the citizens of the county. And we look forward to continuing this important work. Thank you.
Give me just a minute, I'm doing a little thinking here. I don't know what the rest of the board wants to do at this time, but I know I, I need a little bit more time for this to settle in.
Well, I understand.
What does the board want to make a decision now? I'll leave it up to y'all two.
Well, we, we need to decide if we're, if we are in agreement with this plan that's been presented. And at that point, if we do, the approval of the appropriations and, and transfers are just formalities. But we still need to know where that
Yeah.
$130,000 is going to be coming from.
And we just got this at 1:30 today. And my time that I've had to review it with Mr. Regan, he's, I skimmed it real quick when he came in and I was lost. I didn't know everything, I mean, I did a quick skim. And I might as well not have wasted my time, really, but I did get more answers from it after the explanations. I don't think Mr. Tadlock's had a chance to even, even review this yet.
You want time to review the supplemental request?
Yeah, but I do want to know where we're going to come up with the $410,000.
Okay, how about the budget transfer so they can?
Be moving the money around within the?
Within the budget.
Within the budget, I really don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, we need to go ahead and do that.
I think we could probably do that
Right.
and approve those transfers. Mr. Tadlock, you see any reason not to do that?
I don't, I, I believe that was part of the discussion that we had last time was that if any of the transfers would cause a negative impact on any of the existing, you would be putting that category into a negative number. I think that's why we didn't do the transfers at the last regular meeting.
Yeah, we, we didn't do that last time. We didn't make a decision on it because we wanted Mr. Williams to be here to make that final decision.
That's correct.
So personally, I guess I don't see any real problem making those transfers, money being moved back and forth around. And that'll give us a little bit of time to see if we have the money.
But we do have the meeting Friday.
Friday, yes.
If the board, I mean, I don't want to delay it, but if you wish to have time to review it.
That's another option, gentlemen.
Because we did.
We can do Friday.
We did get it at 1:30 this afternoon.
I'd like to see it all happen at the same time and, uh, give it a look on, on Friday. Give us a few days to look over it.
Yep.
And give it a look again on, on Friday.
I think we'd all feel better if we did that.
So if we had to pay the $1.3 million, where would that have come from?
It would have come out of the general fund.
Okay.
And this would have, this would come out of the general fund as well.
Okay, so we identified where the money's coming from.
But, uh, just make the board aware that we are actively engaging with Davenport and banks to look to have to borrow money at this point.
And Friday, Friday's meeting, can you have a, um, a rough number on what will be left in the contingency fund after the $410,000?
You're, I, I can, but it's not going to be very much.
What choice have we got?
You don't have a choice.
We can vote on it Friday.
So what time we're doing the meeting on Friday? What time you having the meeting set up for Friday?
It starts at 1 o'clock. The, the time for 1 o'clock is for a closed meeting.
Is there something we can do before then?
We got to meet soon, we got to meet 12 o'clock.
Huh?
Something like that.
I don't care, we did it before, after, I don't care.
Well, we can do it afterwards.
So we're going to stick at 1 or what?
That's the decision the board needs to make right now. If you want to meet at earlier than 1 o'clock, make each decisions. We need to do that right now. I know for y'all that not working might make a difference. Have to get up. Mr. Williams, are they going to affect you if we come early?
No, sir, I'm available.
I know you're, you up early, you got a lot to do during the day there for a while. We all do, but.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
I'll be here.
All right, y'all want to meet 12 o'clock? Tadlock? You don't care if that, you, you don't have anything that's going to interfere to you?
I don't have what?
Anything to interfere besides lunch?
He's bringing lunch.
He's bringing lunch for everybody, all right.
I just.
Let's change that meeting date to, uh, we're going to have to meet at 20, uh, 24th, 25th? 25th at 12 p.m. Noon that day.
Yep.
That'll work.
All right, anything else we want to ask Mr. Regan? While we're here or what else? Or we can, can Mr. Tadlock move on to the next item?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, the next item is regarding UHY as well. In the draft statement of work we received for the temporary director of finance, it was some information that they provided and that was a request by the school division and some previous discussions that the board had, had had.
All right. Do you need us to make any other decision right this minute? Or any discussion on this? And everybody had a chance to look at the information we got here on the UHY contract? Think it's money well spent. All right, and no questions on this? Mr. Tadlock, you have any comments?
No, sir.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board then? Or you want to make a, make a decision on Friday on that also?
Yeah.
What you got on your mind, Chip, let's see you think. See what you're thinking?
Well, I was thinking about UHY and the transfer to the schools and the appropriations. If we, we've all said we backed ourselves into a corner or we've been backed into a corner and we don't have, but one decision making is to approve what they brought before is I don't know why we're kicking that down until Friday.
Let's move forward. Let's go with it.
Let's go with it. You make a motion, Chip.
We didn't come too far to back up. Let's move forward. We made a commitment to help the school system.
Look, I'll make the motion that we move forward on those requests.
We would need to take those individually, I guess, right?
You want to take them individually?
As far as the contract?
No. The appropriations?
Oh, for the appropriations? Yes, sir. I would do those individually since they were presented individually.
No one knew them as alone. Do each one separately.
So the first one I have here is the transfer of funds from Federal Cares as indicated from $6,500 to, in the amount of $195,092.24, to $6,300 in the amount of $127,176.84, to transfer to $6,200 in the amount of $4,094.99, and to $6,100 in the amount of $63,820.41.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against? All right. Next one, Mr. Tadlock?
Next is to transfer the funds, and I'm not sure if that's a $6,420 or $6,920. Ms. Ashton?
$67.
Oh, I'm sorry, $67. In the amount of $150,638.77, for a total of $150,638.77. And that's going to Budget Code 6,800.
Move it through.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against?
Next is a transfer from $6,900 to $6,100 in the amount of $535,532.74.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against?
Next is a transfer of funds 60, from Budget Code 6,400 in the amount of $100,000 to $6,300.
Move it through.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, if not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against?
Next is a transfer of funds from $6,600 in the amount of $100,000 to $6,300. Again, for a total of $100,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against?
All right. Next one is the supplemental appropriation to $6,100 in the amount of $380,000 and to line item $6,200 in the amount of $30,000. Total amount of $410,000.
I move that we approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? A lot of money, gentlemen. Better than $1.3? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against? All right. Guess that's all I'm in it, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have.
Want another one for 30 to equal the 410?
That was.
Included.
That included, that last motion.
That included it. All right. Next item, Mr. Tadlock?
The UHY contract for the Temporary Director of Finance and assistance for the policies and procedures.
Gentlemen, y'all had a chance to review that?
I reviewed it. I can't say I thoroughly understood it. I tried my best.
Read page eight. Last page.
Yeah. Time is of the essence.
I kind of broke it down. It's a statement of work there. All right, what's the pleasure of the board then?
When we enter into this contract, I guess what I want to know is how long are we, how long are we anticipating UHY being here? Because I know Mr. Long, I agree with you. I think they need to stay here to do the job. And make sure everything is running smooth. But I also want them back.
Yeah, oh yes, most definitely. I would say the answer to your first question would be, how soon will we get a person in here to fill that position? That would be the key to that.
So we're looking for at least three months?
I don't know. I don't know. Some of these applicants are ready to go to work.
But you still would have to give them time to work with.
Oh, yeah.
With UHY before you can.
We don't have to be properly trained and set up with coming back and checking from time to time quite often.
That's why I threw it to three month long because it took us a month to get someone here would give us at least two months to have them here working with us.
So the way this is broken down is they've got it July, which we're practically through July at this point, and August. Each of those months would be $18,480 per month. And then during the September timeframe, they would be scaling back. That cost would be $12,320 for the month of September as laid out here. Now, the policies and procedures that they would work on would total $18,800. So total costs, if you went with the way this is written, and they've started doing some of this work already with inputting the initial budget appropriation, looking at trying to get some of that information together. But totally, you're looking at $68,080.
What was that again?
$68,080.
And that would have them on with us for about two more months, is that right?
For approximately two more months. Yes, sir.
You say they've already done some of this work here in July?
I know they've been working with the School Division on certain aspects of trying to work with RDA in determining how to upload their budget and things like that.
All right. Were they under the school's contract then?
That I don't know. I can't answer that.
Something I'd like to know here, let's see. Ms. Ashton?
Yes, sir.
Could you? We're looking at this, at this UHY contract. I guess everything UHY has done to this point has been under the school's contract?
I can't speak directly to that because I have not seen, I have not seen the contract to know specifically what you're referring to.
That's, that's one of the things I got on my mind here, gentlemen, is this is for the month of July. July's almost gone. Wouldn't this need to be updated and put August there, then extended it one more month? Is that correct, Mr. Tadlock? Or what?
I think the date should be changed. I think they put that date on there just as a starting reference.
Thank you, Ms. Ashton.
You're welcome.
I don't know. Can we find out and then make a decision by Friday?
I can get clarification from Mr. Regan.
Why don't we just do that? Let's make sure of this thing. If that's all right, rest of the board now.
Yep.
All right. All right, Mr. Tadlock, whenever you're ready.
All right, the next item I have is the carryover supplemental appropriation from the Sheriff's Office. Would ask that we just hold off on that. We are trying to get some additional information related to that.
Okay.
Next item I have is the ARPA money carryover from fiscal year '25 to '26 in the amount of $517,082.72 to 45-3507-8127.
All right. I guess you need a motion to approve that, don't you?
Yes, sir, to carry those monies over.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against?
What's that going to be used for?
The remaining of those funds is for the school sewer project.
That's right.
Next item is the carryover funds from fiscal year '25 to '26 regarding the Commissioner of Revenue Forestry grant that he had received. And that's going from fiscal year '25 to '26 to 10-1209-8006 in the amount of $13,209.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against?
Next is the opioid abatement settlement funds from fiscal year '25 to '26 carryover. Yes, yeah. For 47-5102-3200 in the amount of $88,540.21.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move it through.
All right, got a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against?
Next one I have is the opioid abatement settlement fund, and this is for the June interest accrued. And this is going to be for the fiscal year '25 in the amount of $37.20. And that's also to 47-5102-3200.
All right.
Move it through.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Second. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against? All right.
All right. Next item we have is that we have received another opioid settlement, and that's been reached through Purdue. We need authorization from the board to sign that in order to participate in that settlement, if the board wishes to do so.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against?
Next, we've received two invoices related to the school sewer project. The first one in the amount of $10,000 to Fair Winds Automation, and the second one is $2,465 to Mangram Consulting. And we're just asking authorization to handwrite those checks.
These funds would come out of the ARPA fund?
Part of this would come out of the ARPA funds, which is in the general fund. But part of the, the Fair Winds would be totally ARPA. The Rob Mangram invoice, we had set aside a certain amount for engineering consultation, and a portion of that will come out of ARPA. But since we would run out of those funds for the ARPA, we've taken the rest of that out of the sanitary district.
All right, you want this in two separate motions, since it's coming out of two different spots?
This is just to handwrite the checks, so I don't think in this, no, this is just to handwrite the checks, so I think you're fine.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board then?
Motion to authorize the writing of the checks.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those against? All right.
All right. Next item, the last item I have is to authorize us to hire Mr. Bowles for the amount of, in the amount of $37,907.17 for the annual salary.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
All right, I got a motion to have a second. All right, got a second, Mr. Long. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All against? All right.
And that would be effective August 1st?
August 1st, is that?
If, if you all are okay with having that part of the motion.
Put that in the motion then. All right, what else you have, Mr. Tadlock?
Just for clarification, does the board still want to meet at noon, or do you want to meet at 1:00 now that the board has taken action on those other items?
Taken action? I think we can go back to 1:00. Unless you want to bring lunch at 12:00.
You bring it at 1:00.
I guess you heard that one?
We don't, we don't have any money.
All the time we give you to come on.
What you say, you've broken off open?
All right, so we'll go back to a meeting time of 1:00.
1:00.
On the 20th, on the 25th. All right. All right. Y'all want to carry over or you want to adjourn? We got a meeting on the 25th.
Carry over, Carl.
Would I would probably say we just carry over.
Yep, Carl.
Unless you feel we ought to disclose, Mr. Tadlock?
No, we can carry over.
Since it's two totally different things, but.
Oh, Carl.
All right. Motion to carry over until 7:25, 25 at 1:00 p.m.
1:00 p.m., right.
And I have a second. All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All against? Thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank everyone online, too.